Good evening and welcome to the December 11, 2017, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. In accordance with open meeting law, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording. Seeing none, if you could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Looking at our agenda, we have no public comments, we have no presentations and public hearings, we have no communications under Board of Selectmen general items. I would like to entertain a motion to take Agenda Item A and B together.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. So we have a one-day indoor entertainment license for Auburn Youth and Family Services for Dancing with the Stars fundraiser, and we also have a one-day beer and wine license for Auburn Youth and Family Services for the Dancing with the Stars fundraiser. Is there a representative here? If you want to come up and join us, you're welcome to come right up to the table. We can generally hear you a little better from right here. Good evening, and if you could just give your name for the record and just tell us a little bit about your event.
I'm Maureen Kennedy, and I'm here representing Auburn Youth and Family Services. And our event is going to be January 27, 2018. We have a change of venue, though. It's going to be at the Auburn Mall this year. It's going to be where the Reliant Health is going. We're going to be backing up to that. The Auburn Mall has been working wonderful with us. They have a lot of great ideas. I'm thrilled that we're coming there. And that's about all I can tell you right now. We have a snow date of February 10. I think everything else we've done so far that you need.
So in the past, you have served beer and wine. You have provided us with tip certification in your pocket. Do members have any questions? So I know, Ms. Kennedy, not specifically the Dancing with the Stars, but Auburn Youth and Family Services has had other events at the Auburn Mall that went off without a hitch, without any issues.
Yes, no problem, yes.
It was, I believe, a fashion show.
Fashion show, yes.
And also had, you know, catered food and alcohol, which there were no issues with it?
We are putting up, which will be different. We're having pipe and draping to separate the people at the mall from the Dancing with the Stars. And we've audited bracelets, so anybody coming in is going to need a bracelet. I think that's especially where alcohol is being served. We'll have extra security at the door, just for that reason, too.
And are you the one that met with DCG?
No, Sally Dacchiangelo.
Okay.
And we do have crowd. We have Scott Ren and Chief Coleman are going to be our crowd contributors.
Crowd, yeah. The crowd, certified crowd manager?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, great. If there are no board questions, is there any public comment regarding this? Is there a motion? I'll take A first.
I make a motion to approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion under the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there an additional?
I make a motion, we wave the fee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion under that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. And I'll entertain a motion regarding B, the one-day beer and wine license.
I make a motion that we approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Second.
Is there any discussion under the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Motion to wave the fee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Ms. Kennedy, I don't know if you want to say anything else about your event, about your...
Well, we will start, you'll see, right here at the table with us.
Well, I was going to ask you about that. If you want to tell us a little bit about your dances.
Yes, Dan Carpenter is dancing this year. We're very, very pleased.
Congratulations, Mr. Carpenter.
I'm going to be out of town, I'm sorry.
I know. One of these years, we'll get you.
It's a wonderful event. Congratulations, Dan. Hopefully, members will be there rooting you on.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great and successful event. Okay, moving on. We have a common vigilance license for Katz Boy Incorporated, doing business as Town Pizza 69 Auburn Street. Is there a representative here? Yes, if you want to come up and join us. While you're coming up, I'll just speak to the board. In your packet, you have an application from Katz Boy, Inc., doing business as Auburn Town Pizza, with a memorandum from the DCG. Good evening. If you could just tell us your name for the record.
My name's Panayiotis Katsounis.
Okay, and you'll be the new owner-manager of...
I'm the owner-manager.
Great, okay.
Auburn Town Pizza.
Great. So members in your packet, as I said, you have the application, and then you have some recommended DCG conditions. Do members have any questions or comments?
Just one question, I guess, through the chair.
Mr. Volstrom, certainly.
It's always been Auburn Pizza. Is it going to stay Auburn Pizza?
Yes, absolutely.
Auburn Town Pizza? So when we walk in the door, we still recognize the place?
Everything is the same.
Great, so it's all going to be the same. Great, thank you.
Anything else? Is there a motion on the application?
I make a motion that we approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license, and that the license will be for the rest of the month of December 2017 and for the year 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion under the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Best of luck, and you're new.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Business. Thank you for coming in. Moving on, we have the 2018 annual license renewals. Enclosed is a list of the annual license renewals for 2018. They were reviewed by the Treasury, Collecta, and DCG with no issues indicated. I'll also make mention that this is a complete list, with the exception of a couple of drain layers licenses. And generally, drain layers may not necessarily renew annually. If they don't have any work pending in the town of Auburn, then they don't generally renew. So, you know, in every other sense, you have a complete list before you. Do any members have any questions regarding the list?
No, I have nothing.
If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the license renewals, provided that all the applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions, with any conditions stated by the DCG on the licenses.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Is there an additional conditional motion?
I make a motion we approve any additional license renewal applications that come in by December 31, 2017, that have no outstanding issues.
Second.
Any discussion under the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Moving on, Mr. Mitchell. We have an authorization to deficit spend for a recent sewer main break. Please come up and join us. It's so much easier to hear from this end of the table. Thank you. And I did hear this presentation at the Finance Committee, but you can share it with the Board of Selectmen and the viewing public again.
Yes, a little more information, numbers-wise.
Okay.
Yeah, back October 30, there was a report of sewage that was spilling onto the street and whatnot. During investigations, we found that there's a portion of 18-inch sewer line in the easement that collapsed. And further investigation showed that it was due to hydrogen sulfide gases. So during the process, it got very costly. We had to shut down one of the pump stations for a couple days. In order to do so, we had numerous septic haulers. Rather than pumping it through the force mains, we were pumping out with the septic haulers and hauling it from the Sword Street Station to the Holstrom Court Station until we were able to set up a game plan in order to try to fix the problem, which we called RH White. They were there the next morning, dug up the portion of pipe that where the break was, worked all day into the night on Halloween night, and approximately 10 o'clock, as we thought we had fixed the problem, we turned everything back on, only to find out that another section, about 15, 20 feet down, blew out as well. So we had to back up and regroup. And at that point, we hired a couple bypass pumps. And rather than running the septic haulers at a cost of about $2,500 an hour, we set up a couple bypass pumps, and they've been running ever since. And so, since the report at the Finance Committee, we've hired a contractor now that's replaced a good portion, probably 200 or so feet of the line. We're hoping to finish the project this week. And so, once that's done, that section will be all set, and then we can investigate further to see if we need to do any more work further down because of the hydrogen sulfide. So I'm here before you tonight to request to deficit spend in order to, you know, pay the bills that have been incurred due to the problem.
Mr. Johnsonovich.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. I think Jeff gave you an update as best he could. Early on, we didn't know what the total cost of the project was going to be. We did have a sum of money that we believed was adequate enough to address initially the break without exceeding the appropriation that was approved by Town Meeting, as well as in the operational side of the budget, as well as the capital side of the budget. Annually, we appropriate $100,000 within his operating budget through the sewer enterprise fund towards retained earnings to build up some capital equity to address situations such as this. It's there if we should have a failure during the course of the year, and most years, we put it into retained earnings and build that up. Unlike snow and ice, this request requires a vote of the board. Once the board approves it, we then have to notify the Director of DOR, who also needs to approve it as well. I've had a conversation with DOR on a few occasions, informing them that we were taking this vote to the board. We fully intend to submit a letter to them, expecting approval by DOR as well. DOR's ruling this whole matter is, they need some reassurance that there's adequate funding to provide payment for these invoices without eroding their retained earnings within the enterprise fund. I could tell you, our certification as of July 1 for period ending June 30 of 2017 netted about 1.4 million of retained earnings. So we are going to dip into that 1.4. We just don't know how much yet, but we have about, would you estimate, Jeff, about 100,000 of that 1.4?
In deficit right now, yeah. Right now, with everything that's estimated and billed as to date, we're about 116,000 in the hole. But we have yet to be invoiced from RH White, which that could be anywhere from 50,000 to 70,000 for the work that they did, and, you know, some other incidentals and whatnot. But...
Additionally, we reviewed the sewer enterprise capital for a second time, intending to beef up the CIP portion that would address any failures that might occur in the future without eroding retained earnings. Certainly, Jeff's infrastructure is probably valued at about $65 million. The infrastructure is getting, some parts of the infrastructure is aging out, and we're trying to come up with a long-term plan that will reline some of those pipes and add some life expectancy to the infrastructure itself. The Chairman of the Finance Committee also wanted me to convey to the board that they fully supported this request. They were briefed at their last meeting. At the time, certain costs were unknown. I think it's coming together now, more so now that it's almost completed. But we knew at some point that we were going to exceed, we haven't paid the bills yet, but we were going to exceed what has been appropriated for the current fiscal year. So under Chapter 44, Section 31, you do, as a board, have the authority to approve this request.
Are there any questions? Mr. Volstrom.
Through the chair. Welcome back.
Thanks.
Jeff, I know that when I was at the Finance Committee, you mentioned something about gas lines at the foot of the hill. Has a gas company been able to help you with any of the...
We've passed that section.
You have passed that section.
The first portion of the reconstruction or replacement process was to actually locate, to dig and locate the gas lines, which they did on the first, second day. They canceled this on the first day. So they located the gas lines, marked them, you know, got the depths, and then the next day, they actually started the process of digging around them in order to replace the pipe, which they, it was slow-going, but they were able to get past them. They had to chip a lot of concrete, because some of the portion of the line was encased in concrete, like a whole truckload of concrete, so a little overkill, but they are past that now.
Still, let's talk...
Through the chair. Did that add any additional expense to that project?
Yeah, I don't know exactly how much, but it was probably an additional, I think he said a day and a half of work, you know, labor, not so much material, but labor, digging around, because it was very slow, very slow-going. I think it was two, I think it was two days to get past, is what he said.
Still, let's talk...
One more question. Through the chair to Eddie. Not knowing exactly how much the budget is, I support this anyway. This has got to be done, and, you know, it's great, you know, proactive to be looking at a project down the road with a $65 million infrastructure. But do you foresee any problem within the budget process to get the money to help pay these expenses?
Well, you know, Jeff and I, and Bill, and the Town Manager have had some discussions, and actually had a plan that started building up the retained earnings. Years ago, the retained earnings was in the vicinity of $300,000 to $400,000. We get up to 1.4 million as a result of appropriating a sum of money every year. We still need a long-term plan to address our infrastructure. So whether that means through unauthorized borrowing, and that is paid through user fees on an annual basis over a longer period of time, maybe a 20-year purpose, because I think those bonds would qualify for more than a 10-year purpose, to kind of smoothen out and dilute it, or through a combination of direct appropriation through CIP as well as borrowings. I think first, we need to identify what areas are most vulnerable, what the length of that pipe is, and what the cost would be to either reline it or repair it. But that's something we would have to rely on, probably a consultant to do for us, and that will come with a cost, and that's something I think we should look at and address before we come up with a plan.
Great.
Thank you.
Mr. Berthew.
Through the chair. Jeff, you had said that it was caused by sulfide?
Hydrogen sulfide, yes.
Hydrogen sulfide? And so, is there a piece of equipment that your department has, or that we should be looking at your department having, where, that can detect any excess of that along our current lines?
Well, even if it was detected, there's not much you can do about it. The hydrogen sulfide is created from the wastewater going septic, basically. It's the same type of gas that you could have in your septic system, you know, if it's not maintained. It's generated due to the fact that we've got a little over a mile of a 16-inch force main that comes out of the Sword Street Pump Station, and the pipe is completely full from the pump station at Sword Street and Route 12, all the way to the top of Jerome Ave. So what it does is, it takes about eight hours, you know, if you were to think of a slug of water every pump cycle, moving its way up, it takes about eight hours for that to go from the first cycle of the pump, where it actually starts running down the hill. And what happens is, once it starts moving, it gets turbulent, and that's where the gas is released, more or less. And what it does is, it just carries on down through. So back in the mid-'90s, if I remember right, there was a section, a large section that we replaced because of the gases. And now it's taken another 20 years, you know, to affect the lower end of the pipe. So what the plan is, is to replace the section that we're in now, and then look and probably reline the rest of that line, which should take care of the problem for that, you know, that section. That's going to be target, you know, the high-target area right away.
So there's not really a detection...
Well, I mean, we could put detectors in there, but there's nothing we can do with it, because it's constantly there, you know what I mean? So it's eating away at the concrete, is what it's, it's a concrete pipe, that's the problem. If it was a plastic pipe, there wouldn't be an issue.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything else? Ms. Lola Liberty.
Through the chair. Would voting to allow deficit spending on this include any spending for checking out the other pipelines that we have now, and examining those ones?
No.
No, just on, okay.
Just for this emergency situation only.
Mr. Berthew.
To the chair. Should we be voting on a certain amount, or just allow it to be, to finish the project?
You know, I think by voting in excess of, you don't need a concrete amount. You can keep it open.
Okay, and so if it, like, we're looking, we're hearing that right now, after the RH White bill, we're probably looking around 200,000. It's kind of where we're at now. But by voting, we're just allowing you to go up to the 1.4 million if we need to?
Hopefully, it won't go there.
No, but I guess I'm saying, like, at what point do, does it have to, you know, be discussed? Is that something that...
Yeah, I think because there was some discussion tonight, that the notes could reflect if DOR asked, we were giving you the best numbers we had at this point in time. Certainly, you want the vote to be taken well before you exceed the appropriation, but we know we're in a position now where we are going to exceed it, and that's why we're bringing it to you. Early on, it wasn't known what that cost is going to be, and I think because of the second failure, then it triggered another cost of the job that wasn't anticipated before that. So, no, I think you're okay, just voting in excess of appropriation.
Okay, thank you.
And just, if I may, just, this is only the emergency portion of it, you know what I mean? So whatever, unfortunately, whatever it takes to replace that section, it's about 260 feet of pipe that's being replaced, so that once that is replaced, the system will be up running again, and knock on wood, everything will be fine after that, and then we can just, then we look, then we've become proactive instead of reactive.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything else on this, Ms. Lola Liberty?
Through the chair. Just out of curiosity, is there a way that if we wanted to, we could cap it at, say, $250,000, just, and then if, for whatever reason the project had to deficit spend beyond that point, they would have to come back to the board? Is that an option?
Well, certainly, I think you could, you could make that part of the motion, although I could tell you, if the cost does exceed 250, then we don't have the authorization to approve any change orders. Everything would have to come to a standstill until we came back to the board again. I think, given the fact that you're now, you're not scheduled to meet till sometime in January, that may handcuff what Jeff can do if he's faced with a situation that does take him over that limit. But certainly, we will inform you. I mean, if costs exceed much more than what Jeff is estimating now, we will certainly notify the board and let you know. But I think for purposes of at least giving us some flexibility, if you could keep it open, it would be, that would be much better for us to work with.
Thanks.
Is there anything else on this? Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote authorized spending in excess of appropriation for the sewer main water break on Upland Street at the town line, in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 31.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion under the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you.
That detailed report, we appreciate it.
I'll give you a full report once the project is completed.
Great, thanks so much. Next item is gifted, accordance and gift acceptance in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, and this is acknowledgment and accept the donation of legal services from Roach &amp; Wren, PC Attorneys. Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair. I just want to acknowledge and let the board acknowledge as well, a donation of legal services that we received from the firm of Roach &amp; Wren Attorneys, which are, from attorneys Megan Roach, who also happens to serve separate issue, but does serve on the ZBA, and Scott Wren, who actually serves on the planning board. Scott Wren, on the advice of our Town Council, Bob Hennigan, had asked us to get another attorney that did not represent the town to prepare the deeds, because Bob Hennigan was representing the town in the matter of the transfer of the deeds from Robert Post as the owner of Southfield Road to the town. So rather than representing the town and the preparation of the deeds on behalf of the property owner, he had suggested another attorney. So we did ask Attorney Scott Wren, being an attorney from town, and he did prepare, there were actually two deeds, as you know, you signed them at your last meeting. 159 and 161 were on one deed, and then 160 Southfield Road was on the second. And we were informed by Attorney Wren that he and Attorney Roach wanted to donate their services and not charge the town for the preparation of those deeds. We did have to pick up the cost for the title, for the title research that we did with Mr. Charlie Ball, and we will have to pick up the cost at the town for the registry of deeds once this is filed. But the actual legal cost for the preparation of the deeds is being donated to us, so we wanted to thank them, the firm, very much for doing that. They did a great job. They turned it around very quickly for us.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion regarding accepting the donation of legal services?
I'll make a motion that we accept with gratitude and have the chair do a letter of appreciation to PC Attorneys Roach &amp; Wren.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. And you have an additional donation that was handed to tonight. It's a donation to the Fire Department Gift Account from local 330 Brotherhood of Utility Workers in the amount of $100. Is there a motion?
I wish to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. The next item we have is a vote on a special municipal... The next item we have is a vote on a special municipal employee designation, and we have Mr. Coyle and Mr. Moody here regarding this matter. Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair. As you probably recall, in the past, the board has, by Mass. General Law, had to take votes for certain positions, not, not personnel or employees by name, but the position to enable them to do, to perform other work on behalf of the town per conflict of interest laws. So, maybe a year ago, the board, we provided a list to the board of positions, and it was, I believe it was the ACO, all the Planning Board members, all the ZBA members, pretty much every board and commission, which basically, and here's a good case for the item you just had with Attorney Wren and Attorney Megan Roach, they both participate as volunteers on board and commissions, but because they're on boards and commissions that have special town employees, they were allowed to do the work on behalf of the town. If they didn't have that special designation, they might have to file a disclosure or go to the state's office to do work on behalf of the town when they actually have a position that's in the town, whether it's paid or unpaid. So, in this particular case before you, our Building Commissioner, Caleb Moody, has previously worked for the DPW before he was our Building Commissioner, and he does know how to plow, has operated the equipment, and Mr. Coyle, DPW Director, is always looking for plow operators who are reliable, and Mr. Moody has indicated that he would be willing to plow in an emergency if needed. But in order to do that, you have to vote his position as a special municipal employee. Again, it's the position, so regardless of who would be in that position, that position would be allowed to plow for the town.
Are there any questions on this? Is there a motion?
Motion on the special municipal employee designation is Building Commissioner to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you. The timing is very good on that, as you can see with, yes, still snow coming, unfortunately. Thank you.
Moving on, we have Town Manager items, and we have the meteorological tower status update. Ms. Jacobson.
Yes, we wanted to come before the board. As you know, the, we have a so-called MET Tower, which is a meteorological tower that was erected maybe five years ago up on the town's land behind Home Depot, and it was erected and monitored through a grant that we had received. And the grant had come to the town in various phases. The first was to install the MET Tower, collect the data. The second portion of that was to do a business analysis of the economics of that, and that part of it got tied up at the state for probably close to three years. With the state, there were issues at the state with getting the remainder of that grant released. That program was kind of being phased out at the state level with the onset and, I'd say, expansion of solar options in the state. Wind turbines have become less of a focus on the state level. So, we, and Matt, our Town Planner is here, if you have any questions, but the gist of what we wanted to bring to you tonight is just to update you that we believe that based on the data that was produced by that MET Tower, it would be very expensive to install a wind turbine on that site. We don't know that it would make sense to install a wind turbine when we have other agreements that can provide relief to the town through solar and net metering credits, which is, no, there's no liability to the town for that. There's no equipment that the town owns. So, the Energy Committee, I know Jeff Mitchell is a member of the Energy Committee, and Matt will tell you, he attends as the liaison to it, and they have not had a quorum for a little bit. A couple of the members either moved out of town or had to resign, and we're still looking for replacement members, so they haven't had a meeting where they took an actual vote on this. But prior to that, for the last two to three years, the committee has been discussing not pursuing this wind turbine. As the board knows, you've also received some concerned comments and questions and letters from residents in that area who are concerned about it. We feel at this point, it's not economically feasible to pursue it. It doesn't mean it couldn't be pursued in the future. Should technology change? Should any of the solar credits dry up? Should the components that go into wind turbines become more cost-effective? Right now, they're not. So, it is, it was our recommendation that the tower be removed because it's done collecting its data. The tower is just there. So, under the grant, we will have that removed, and at this point, we're not looking to pursue it any further. So, I'm going to turn to Matt and to Jeff, both as a member of the committee and the Town Planner. Is there anything else I should be adding to this?
Great. Mr. Holstrom.
Through the chair. Julie, I did bring one of those concerns to you, and I did take a walk up there, and it looks like the unit has been somewhat vandalized, and some of the guy wires to the ground have loosened up, so I don't know how steady or how safe it is to be in the air, and it's probably a good 75 to 100 feet in the air anyway. Is there any time period where it looks like you're going to be able to get up there to take it down? I know that my understanding was the DPW or somebody had to make some revisions to the road up there so you could get equipment up there, but now you might be able to get up there now. When is the time that it's going to be coming down?
Through the chair, the DPW did go up and do some clearing to enable the company to get in and remove that. Matt, do they have a date for removal yet?
No, there's no firm date yet. However, the original consultant that was engaged with this project is working with a third-party company out of Vermont, because there's, solar's not a lucrative business in Massachusetts anymore. It's hard to find someone who even still takes these things down. So, under the original agreement, there was money appropriated for this decommissioning through the grant, as Ms. Jacobson mentioned, and they're just finalizing a date to do that. It just hasn't been disclosed to us yet, but it should be within a handful of months, if that.
Within how long?
A handful of months, if that, but this winter. It's easier to remove the tower and get up there when the ground's solid and it's not muddy.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else on this? Ms. Lola Liberty.
Through the chair. If the town were to pursue this again, which seems unlikely, but the data's already been collected, right? So, there's no even need for the tower anymore now that the data's already been collected?
Sure. Some of the data has been collected. As the tower continues to stand, it's still collecting data. So, once they remove it, they'll collect the remaining data and provide us with that as well. So, to your point, perhaps if it's ever pursued in the future, who knows if the data's still relevant at that time? We don't know, but at least we'll have what we've collected and be able to present that to a future consultant if we wish to pursue that.
Thank you. Anything else on this? Excuse me. Moving on, we have Ms. Jacobson, the keyless entry system to Town Hall.
Yes, I just wanted to notify the board that as of this Wednesday, we will be installing a keyless entry system on all the main doors to the Town Hall in the Marion Building. And as you know, we've provided board members with codes to access the buildings. Employees will also have codes, and board and commissions that utilize the buildings for meetings. We've provided the code for them separately to the chairs of those boards and committees. And we just wanted the public to be aware that during the day, during normal business operations, the doors will be unlocked and anyone can access, and during the evening, they'll automatically lock when the last employee leaves. And if a board or commission member does have a meeting here, they will have a code that will control the back door and the front door only for those boards and commissions. Employees will be able to access all the doors, board members, all the board of selectmen members, all the doors. And it should do a couple of things. It should help make the building more secure. It should also help those boards and commissions that may come, and for some reason, the door was accidentally locked when somebody left, thinking that there was no one coming in. Oftentimes, those boards or commissions contact DPW or the Fire Department. They have to come up here and let them in. This will provide access to them, and it's also just an added security measure to the buildings here in Town Hall. So, it also cuts down on the need for keys. While there's a key override system, the keypad will make it much simpler for those who use it on a regular basis. Each keypad can hold up to 16 codes, so should we ever have an issue or a problem or a turnover in some place that we want to change the code, we can change the code, and you can have it anytime again, up to 16 codes in that system.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Berthew.
So, that keys, the keys still work, or so we can do an either or? Are we turning in our keys?
No, the keys, I believe, are turned to bill, but the keys that you currently have will not fit this system. You'll just need the keypad. You won't need any key at all. You'll just need to plug them in.
Would you like the keys back?
Yes, we can, we can have the keys back. They, we'll take them back whenever at your, at your leisure.
Great. Thank you. Do you have anything else, Ms. Jacobson?
I do not.
Okay. We have no tabled items. We have no Board of Selectmen member items. We have no, is there any additional public comment? We have the minutes of November 27, 2017. Is there a motion? I'm sorry, if, are there any corrections or omissions? Seeing none, the Chair will accept them as written. So, before we close out this 2017 year we've had, I want to thank everyone who's come before the Board of Selectmen, whether it be for a license, for good news, bad news, resident participation. It's an honor for us to serve you as, you know, as Board of Selectmen members. We wish everyone a merry Christmas, happy holiday season, whatever holiday you celebrate, we wish you the best. Enjoy your friends, your family, and the love and warmth of the season. We wish you a happy new year, and again, it's a privilege and an honor to serve you, and we will see you in 2018. If there's nothing else before the board, I will entertain the motion. Is there a second? All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Good night.